Yeah, tell them it's going, everything's going real slow.
Okay, we'll get started this evening. Brenda, can you give the invocation?
My name is Brenda Jenkins and I'm from Crossroads Community Church and I'd like to ask you to all join me in prayer, please. Holy God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that our local community has. We pray for those who are in offices that govern our community and county, that they may make wise and godly decisions which are always in the best interest of the community. We lift up the items that are on the agenda tonight, giving all who are involved guidance and discernment with their discussions and voting, that they are for the best interest of the people and the businesses. We are blessed that we have the freedom to speak up and vote for those who oppose our set of values, even if we differ from the leaders. I pray for them to be blessed by you, God, and also those who are in law enforcement. Please protect them in their line of duty so that they might protect those of us who have placed our trust in them. And God, please bless the men and women in our city government, in the mayor's office, the commission, and all the elected officials, and certainly those who put themselves in harm's way, like the law enforcement, firefighters, and EMS workers. We pray for those who lead and protect our nation, our state, and our local communities. We ask, Father, that you also include the military because they put themselves in harm's way for our sake. And we thank you, God, for them and the service to our great country. We ask this in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Brenda. So we'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alderman Persson's Clem.
Here.
McLanathan.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Busker.
Here.
Brasshaw.
Here.
Keister.
Here.
Chesney.
Here.
Okay, and if you could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman McLanathan.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number one is the approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Busker for the approval of the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Number two is the approval of the minutes from June 4th, 2018. Is there a motion for that approval?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Keister for the approval of the minutes for June 4th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion passes. Public comments. Teresa Wellman.
Didn't know I was this early on the agenda. I just wanted to take a few minutes to express my concern in the proposed amendment 2018-33. I did go back and watch the YouTube of the June 4th meeting where the amendment was discussed. I then searched for the Illinois Ag and guidance expressed by Mr. Crowe, but I couldn't find it. So I tried to understand how to search those references to see what the Ag says. I share the concerns voiced by Alderman Clem and Keister where it may be difficult for a constituent to attend a city council meeting in person for any number of reasons. Compound this with the majority population's fear of speaking in public. One can understand why letters are more often written than not. While it was noted that one alderman, one's alderman could read a constituent's letter into record on their behalf at any time, one must consider that this too introduces maybe a bit of a slippery slope, so to speak, of some speech suppression. What if the alderman doesn't agree with the constituent and fails to bring the issue forward? The remaining aldermen might view the issue differently and they may have no opportunity to hear it. If there's no guarantee that the concern or issue is to be brought forward on a constituent's behalf, then that person's voice is suppressed and they're penalized for being unable to be present. I also noted in the June 4th video that it was mentioned that a constituent could work to attend a different meeting. That may not be a suitable option should the concern be time-sensitive, such as this vote on this particular amendment. I did not hear in the June 4th video the reasoning for proposing this change other than that the Freeport City Council was unique in allowing advance letters to be read into record. There was no discussion of any problem that this presented to the council in conducting its city's business, although I can imagine you get some nefarious communications that may be inappropriate as related to city business. So I would ask if the council could walk the audience through its thought process on this amendment and provide maybe a different explanation as to why it's seeking to fix something that doesn't appear to be broken. If we have certain communications that are coming in that are, say, inappropriate, that they don't meet the specified requirements that somebody would present publicly if they're rude or individually attacked or profane, one would think that those communications could be discarded or summarized and just note the general subject that the person was interested in. So I just kind of wanted to say maybe don't throw the baby out with the bathwater if you have a few characters that are sending you some really bad messages. Respectfully, thank you.
Thank you.
If you'd like to just stand there so that the audience can see your face, that would be great. So anyway, as Linda is here looking forward to her retirement, I want to take a moment to thank you. Thank you for your 25 years of service as our city treasurer. Linda first took the office May 1st of 1993. During her years in office, she has followed her mission statement to uphold and defend the ideas and the goals of this community. She has served the best interest of all of the people that she has represented, being mindful, ever mindful, of the trust that they have placed in her for electing her for this position. And while we're sorry to see you leave, we want to wish you nothing but the best for your future years of retirement and good luck to you, Linda, on your next venture in life and the journeys that are ahead of you. And so on behalf of the city council and this administration, we wanted to be able to give you those flowers and we also have a plaque for you that says, "Best wishes and congratulations on your retirement, presented to our city treasurer Linda Bus by the city of Freeport. With appreciation for 25 years of service and dedication, enjoy the years that lie ahead. Open your arms to all the delights of flowers and music, every lovely thing." So congratulations, Linda.
Let me start by saying thank you. Thank you to the citizens of Freeport. I am honored and humbled that you entrusted me to serve you for 25 years, having been elected seven consecutive times. I have countless memories that have impacted my life in very meaningful ways. I have been shaped by coworkers and friends that I have encountered over the course of my career. And I promise, Sally, I wasn't going to cry or dance, but I don't know. Bear with me. Those that deserve the most accolades, however, are my fellow treasurers from across the state. Where else can you go to best learn about being a treasurer than other treasurers? They have been a valuable asset to me in my career and in my life, many of which I call friend. The networking was invaluable and I owe a huge debt of gratitude to both Brad Bettenhausen of Tinley Park and Michael Peterson of Lincolnshire, who have been my go-to guys for information. Couldn't have done it as well without them. You may be surprised that my proudest moments aren't the numerous certifications I have received, although they mean a great deal to me. My proudest moments are those moments where I was able to assist a nervous police officer or an anxious fireman who was going through the pension process. I tried to make the process as simple as possible, give them as much information as I could, and assist them every step of the way. My most precious moments about when I was assisting a grieving widow through the same process. The paperwork can be overwhelming when you are embedded in such deep sorrow, something that I know firsthand. I did... I did everything I could to make that process seamless. I guess I must have done okay because I have a stack of thank you notes from many of them, sorry, over the years, telling me how much they appreciated my efforts and the kindness that I extended during one of the most difficult times of their lives. The notes were unexpected, yet so heartwarming and rewarding. I look back with gratitude and with a huge sense of accomplishment. I'm leaving with my head held high, maybe with tears in my eyes. I know that I've put my heart and soul into this job and I've taken my responsibilities very seriously. I also know that no one can challenge my devotion, my dedication, my work ethic, or the sacrifices I've had to make. As my last day quickly approaches, I get more and more excited, but I'm quick to realize this. Rather than chasing down investment rates, I'll be chasing down grandchildren. Rather than preparing financial statements, I'll be planting flowers in the garden. And rather than working to beat a deadline, I'll be working to beat my last 5K race. Lastly, but more importantly, I want to thank my family, particularly my sons Jason and Jesse, and my husband, Richard Noto. They have been my support, my stability, and oftentimes my sounding board. The many others that have gone before me reassure me that there is life after City Hall and I can't wait to discover it. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next we have is item number five, the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature unless there's an item that one of the council members would like to remove for further discussion.
Mayor.
Yes.
One item I'd just like to discuss on the board listing. It's not numbered, but it is a payment to the Stevenson County Treasurer for property taxes for $43,000. I just was curious about that one.
Okay, so do you, does, which one line does it fall under? Do you know?
It's on Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda, Item B. Again, the numbers are not listed. The lines are not listed, but it's like the...
Okay.
And the S's, Stevenson County starts, Stevenson County Treasurer, so it's alphabetically listed.
Okay, so then the Item B with the payment made to the Stevenson County Treasurer will discuss the first thing on the list of the agenda then. So is there any other items which to be removed? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of the approval to place on, receive and place on file the city treasurer's police pension fiscal year-ending report, May 1st, 2017 to April 30th, 2018; the city treasurer's fire pension financial year-end report, May 1st, 2017 to April 30th, 2018; building permits, May 2018; the police department report, April and May 2018; minutes from the Board of Fire and Police Commission, regular meeting, April 24th; a special meeting on April 30th, and a special meeting on May 7th, 2018. All of the items on B except for the payment on the Stevenson County Treasurer for the approval of the finance bills payable in the total of $632,575.51 and the approval of the payroll pay period ending June 9th, 2018 in the total amount of $477,540.19. Is there a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion for approval with the exception of Item B, payment to Stevenson County Treasurer, in question.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Keister for the approval of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
And Clem.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the payment for the Stevenson County Treasurer in the amount of...
$43,831.93.
Thank you. Would that be Director Bukas?
Thank you, Your Honor. That payment is for property taxes mostly at the airport. They, they...
Pay a property tax?
Yes.
We do pay property tax for the income that we generate from the hangar rentals, sale of fuels out of the airport. It sits within the mill race TIF and we do pay property tax on anything that generates income.
Including the farm leases out there, too.
I had no idea. Thank you. Chair?
Why? Attorney Zito.
I can chime in on that. So generally, right, municipally-owned property is tax-exempt. However, if a municipality derives income from a piece of property that's owned by the municipality, then it can be subject to a property tax for some, usually it's not 100% taxed, it's some proportion amount of income generating use that will then be subject to a property tax. So that's common across the state. So if you're generating income off the property via like rent, let's say a lease, you know, there's a municipal piece of property that you are then leasing out to a private entity, then that portion, you may lose some of your tax-exempt status on that property.
Follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
Attorney Zito, though, we don't operate that airport even close to an income. So does that still have an impact on a tax assessment?
It does. They're, so they're looking at whether or not there's just, and I should, I should say if there's revenue being generated from that parcel as opposed to actual net income, I guess.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion for the approval of the payable?
So moved.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, when, when the county gave us $50,000 in a $50,000 loan, effectively they're giving us our money back?
Excuse me?
We got a $50,000 loan in the mill race TIF plus a $50,000 for the airport expansion. So effectively what they've done is they've given us our own money back?
Potentially, you know, if, right, if we're paying our property tax on a portion of the airport, I guess you could look at, you could look at it that way, right? Because there's money out, but then there's also money coming back in. But again, it also, it's bigger than just the treasurer. The treasurer's an entity that collects payments, but you'd also have, the discussion also involves the assessor because the assessor is the one who's assessing, saying, hey, there should be some sort of tax assessed against this municipal property because of the use that's on it that is driving some sort of revenue, generating some sort of revenue for the, for the community.
Follow-up if I could?
Alderman Clem.
In other words, then, if we didn't look at a situation similar to that, the county owns a whole bunch of land in the city of Freeport that has defunct taxes on it that they don't even mow or anything but pay nothing on that. Just a question.
So you're talking about the tax, the, those properties that are on...
Tax, tax defunct, yes.
Yeah, tax sale. They, those properties, when they, in discussing with the county assessor, the view on those is those properties will, once they're sold, they will return back to the tax rules. And that was why, so right now, they are not being, they do not pay tax to us on that because they're not generating any revenue on that property as it is. But... When it's sold, it'll get back on the tax rules.
Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan.
Is the designation when you're dealing with a municipality on the income or revenue, either way you want to use it, is it discretionary or mandatory in regards to the taxes on that?
I believe it's mandatory, but I'd have to look into that and check the statute as well as, you know, probably speak with the assessor just to see how they're making a determination as to is their revenue slash income being generated by the particular use that's on the property that's owned by the municipality.
Sure.
I can give an example, let's say, in a, another community that has a park. It owns a piece of property on which there is a public pool located on it. It's not operated by the municipality, but they have a lease with the municipality that, you know, to be able to operate this pool on it and that causes the municipality to have to pay, because there is some revenue being generated, paid to the municipality through those lease payments, that they do lose some of their complete property tax exempt status on that. Now, that's in Winnebago. I'd have to, it should be generally the same here in Stevenson. I believe that would be statutorily imposed, but obviously assessment practices differ amongst counties, so.
Madam Chair.
Alderman Chesney.
Attorney Zito, are you familiar with the Stevenson County Nursing Home?
I'm not, I apologize.
Okay, we have a Stevenson County Nursing Home. Would you agree they probably generate revenue?
This is, this is property, yes, I would assume so, that the...
Do you know how much they pay in tax? I just looked it up. Zero. So how can a generating entity like the nursing home pay zero taxes, but our airport's taxed $44,000?
This is, I guess the question is, is the Stevenson, is it owned by the county then?
Yes, 100%.
Right, so I guess the question then is, it's not, it's not surely about, solely about generating the revenue. It's about the fact that, my understanding is, because we, at the airport, we own the property, but we're getting lease payments from a private person or there, we're not, you know, from that standpoint, we're deriving rental income or revenue from these private individuals there. So they're saying that, but we're not... Items, correct? Director Bukas.
That's correct.
Chair.
But again, part of it would have to be, we'd have to speak with the assessors just to see what are the criteria that they're using for determining the assessment there because it does vary. So I can't speak to that part to see why they're assessing one and not assessing another situation.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Clem.
Could somebody explain to me then what the difference would be between renting a hangar and renting a hospital bed?
I think that's a valid question. Again, and I can't speak to the assessment practices there, so I'd have, I'd have to look into it more, so.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Just for clarification, the Stevenson County Nursing Home is on, in city limits?
It is.
If I may follow up. I agree with pretty much all the statements that have been made here and I would like to see a lot more research done into it as to why they're not paying, but we are, and have a look into what we're paying and is it just and is it based on fact or what in fact it's based on.
Mayor? Mayor.
Alderman Smith.
Well, I don't want to cut off Aaron if he was going to offer a reply. I only brought it up, you know, if the law compels us to pay it, we pay it. I don't have any qualms about that. I just, you know, maybe for the next meeting or for the cow, we could bring some clarification as to the billing process and what thinking went into, you know, on the assessor's part to billing this for taxes, that's all. I don't want to belabor the meeting on an issue that...
Well, we do have a first on the floor by Alderman Brasshaw, but I didn't actually see the second was. Alderman Keister.
I'll second it.
So is there any further discussion? If not, we will take a vote on this and then place it on discussion for the next round.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, Alderman Clem.
Since we're not defunct on the taxes or anything, should we hold a check until we have more discussion on it? Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan.
I guess, kind of in response to that, counsel, you don't have any, it's not an issue as to whether it's a legitimate expense here, from your perspective. Like, from your perspective, it is a legitimate expense. Some of the other questions in regards to, well, what are the exact scenarios where this applies and how is it being applied is kind of a separate secondary issue. Is that correct?
Correct. I am familiar with the fact or have seen other communities, and I'll speak to those situations, right, that where, when there is revenue or income being generated, typically through lease payments, then that a lot of times that property will be assessed, some sort of a property tax against the municipality. There, how they end up deriving the amount or the situation, that would, is what I would need to look into more as to why in our situation, is this property being assessed? But the, for example, the nursing home not there, so.
Mayor, I agree with you, Tom. I think we should look at it. I would suggest, as Peter and Bob mentioned, we probably should pay the bill because this has been the way we've gone. But if I could just request, it's on the cow with a thorough report as to why we're paying taxes on a municipal entity, so.
I'll put it on the count, put the paperwork together and brief the council.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? So we have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Keister for the approval of the payment for the Stevenson County Treasurer. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
And Clem.
Aye.
That passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number six is the second reading of Ordinance 2018-31. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
An ordinance amending Chapter 886 entitled Hotel Tax of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Freeport.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
Madam Mayor, this changes the delivery of hotel motel tax from the Stevens, Stevenson Convention Visitors Bureau to the Greater Freeport Partnership to support the contract, additionally establishes the $40,000 to be paid annually for Visitors Center through 2024. It removes the sunset of hotel motel tax that is scheduled to happen in 2024. This is, 5% is the maximum that a non-home rule community can have for hotel motel tax and it, currently we're generating, last year we generated $235,000 in hotel motel tax. I anticipate generating about $250,000 to $265,000 this year.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Clem.
Is it my understanding with this ordinance going through that it also eliminates the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board?
The Convention and Visitors Bureau Board was already eliminated with the forming of the Greater Freeport Partnership. And it does, and it formally eliminates this in this ordinance. There was actually, so.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Chesney.
So Manager Crowe, we don't need a separate ordinance to eliminate the board after passage?
No, I've discussed that with both Aaron and Roxanne and I don't feel it's required.
Okay.
Mayor?
Alderman Keister.
Just in answer to Alderman Clem in Section 886.04, Number 1, it specifically strikes out the Stevenson County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the passage of Ordinance 2018-31?
McLanathan. Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
No.
And Clem.
Aye.
That passes seven to one.
And item number seven is the second reading of Ordinance 2018-32. Could you please read this for the record?
An ordinance of the City of Freeport approving and authorizing the city to enter into a lease agreement regarding the property commonly known as 1819 Southwest Avenue, Freeport.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we have closed on the sale of the property. The last portion of this is to complete the lease. This completes the lease for, on a $1,000 a year to allow continued testing hoses and training out at the fire station. The sale was completed last Thursday, a week ago Thursday, and the only thing that's outstanding to make the sale completely legal is the approval of this lease as we set forward.
Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Brasshaw.
Thank you. Manager Crowe, maybe I'm missing it here. Is there a thing for the term of the lease? For how many years it shall go?
It, it goes forward... It goes forward, the lease goes forward until we establish a new property in which we can do the testing and training.
Follow up?
It's indefinite until we feel that we no longer need it.
Okay, sir, I just saw it here, I'm sorry if I missed this earlier, the initial term of the lease shall be ten years, or unless and until you find another training facility, so they can let us out of it?
Right, they can.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the passage of ordinance 201832?
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
That passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number eight is the second reading of ordinance 201833. Could you please read this for the record?
An ordinance amending Title IV legislation, Chapter 220, Council, Section 220.10, of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Freeport, Regarding Rules of Council.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
Yes, as, this is an ordinance to, again, establish a requirement to be present for presenting issues to council during the public comment. We brought this forward, if we, basically we have to pass, because we don't have any regulations in our current ordinances, this establishes a regulation for the, to be present, and that is, when we talked about the requirements for the AG's office under the PAC, is if we haven't been enforcing it in the past, you want to enforce it, because we haven't, we have to pass the new ordinance, and then go enforce it from that point forward.
Madam Mayor. Alderman Clem.
Alderman McLanahan next to me, McLanahan, talk to me a little bit about what are, what it actually says now. I have a real big problem of doing this. If we eliminate the people that can't send in a letter, I believe that's very irresponsible on our part, but that's just me, okay? If the, if the goal of this, something had to bring this up, and if it's Steve Carroll's letter, you know, say it's Steve Carroll's letter, or it's something, so we've done one thing one way for a zillion years, and all of a sudden now it's a crisis and we've got to change it. And that's what I have a little bit of a problem with. As I read through this, I say, if it's derogative, or if it's slanderous, or if it's got profanity in it, no, that shouldn't be read, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about that. But I really believe that today, with technology the way it is, somebody ought to be able to sit there and type up on their computer a letter and go, and it comes off to you, and you read it before council, like we have for years. Just, you know, some, I guess all I'm looking for is, why do we, why do we really want to change that and eliminate a person's right to submit something to us?
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
As I read, and I think this was the last thing that Manager Crowe had said, so as I read it in its current form without any changes, actually there is no right to send in anything and have it read, it actually talks about speaking, standing up and speaking at the podium. So if we weren't to change anything, technically under the language of it, we haven't allowed it anyway, but you're saying, because in actual practice, we've allowed people to have it read, even though our ordinance doesn't allow it, that if we're going to say, okay, going forward, we're actually going to comply with the plain language of our statute that it's been for however long since it put into place, that's why we'd have to make the change?
That is correct. So, once, once we establish a practice, even though it may be against what our current ordinance is done, in order to make sure that the PAC, that we, doesn't come down and rule against us, we have to pass the ordinance, and then enforce that ordinance again from that, enforce this ordinance from the day we, we pass it. Because we have allowed it in the past, the PAC will rule and say, there's a past practice, and we've established those past practices.
So we got here by not complying with our current ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, whether or not you like the current ordinance, I suppose is a different discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
This could really put us in a catch-22. I understand where we're at, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it, but just say the X number of people on the board that don't really go along with this, and we say, okay, let's put it in, and we've established it for X amount of time, whether that be one week, two weeks, a month, somebody tell me what that time is, and then we don't have the votes to bring it back, guess what, you've got absolutely nothing. You've, you've got, you're in a position that you, somebody cannot have something written, is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question, Tom.
What I'm saying is, if we put this through now, the way it is, okay, and it goes through, now that's going to be our precedent, is going to be that nobody, at that point, has the right to speak to the council, which we're not saying they have the right to speak.
Well, they can speak to the council.
Or they can't send a letter in.
That's correct.
Pardon me.
That's correct.
Okay, and if there's certain people in the council that don't agree with that, and say, I'd really like to be able to have somebody put in a letter, you don't have the votes, or it'll never get there.
Well...
If I don't have four, if I don't have five votes to get it back on, to say people can send in a letter, you're...
Madam Mayor.
So either way, we're wrong.
Alderman Chesney.
Attorney Zio, is there anything that prevents an alderman from reading something into the record under public comments?
I don't believe there's anything that would prohibit that.
And there's also nothing that prohibits your neighbor coming, or your friend, or whoever, to read on your behalf. So maybe what we're looking for is just maybe the simple language of, to insert there to be read by the clerk. You know, where it would say, no written comments in advance or in public meeting to be read into the record at a meeting by the clerk. That way it's, you have to have some type of representation here, no?
So the purpose, Mayor FMA, so the purpose of this ordinance is to say that anybody can speak at any time, they can show up. Absent their ability to speak, they could have somebody come on their behalf, and they can speak for them. Absent that, they could have an alderman come, and they could read it into the record anyways, if they choose to under public, anybody can read under public comments, anybody in this body, anybody that's in the audience, it doesn't have to be on their behalf, it could be on somebody else's behalf.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
I have to agree with Alderman Clem on this one, I am really concerned about limiting people to be able to bring in letters. Yes, we've had one or two of them that shouldn't have been read, and maybe something could be put in there to prevent that, but...
Well, that's what this is.
There is a number of constituents, but if I read it correctly, it means we're not doing letters at all unless you give it to the alderman and they leave it and read it in public comment, is that correct?
No.
This would be no, no letter being submitted unless you were here, or a representation is here.
Okay, but there are, and I've talked to several of them since our, since this came out, from my own constituents, who just simply cannot get here, and they don't, maybe they can't get anybody to come up here, and we're, I don't like the fact of limiting them being able to make a comment that way, and as was stated earlier, in public comments, I'm not saying anybody in this body would do it at this time, but, you know, we're not going to be here forever. If the alderman does not like what they're saying, what's to stop him from not reading it? This way, at least, we know that the person, or the person in the community, their opinion is heard.
Well, don't you think that the alderman is elected in that ward for representing the people, so they really are, I mean, if you want to get down to it, you should.
You should, yes, I agree with you, Mayor, but as it currently said, I cannot support it.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
I have a question for council, and really, you know, at the end of the day, this isn't the end of the world one way or the other, frankly, in which we, in which we have it, so I don't want to spend, you know, forever on it, but I do have a question for council on that, SEL, not CIL. When we're, other municipalities, I think we've talked about this a little last time here, are there other municipalities that have it, that letters can be read into the record?
I think there are other communities that will specify one way or the other. There, I mean, right now, I think the impetus was the fact that we don't have anything on the books that deals with reading a letter in, other than a past practice, so this council needs to decide as a policy what it feels is right for it, to say one way or the other. It's been proposed that, you know, for various reasons, that, you know, this is, you know, the way that was drafted, that, hey, you must, someone must be present to speak, you know, to verbally present a statement, whether it be on behalf of someone else, or on behalf of yourself, but certainly due to the extent the council wants to deviate from that, that's up to the council.
Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Attorney Zio, what's your experience and what's practice amongst the other clients that you represent?
Common practice.
What's common practice?
Just speaking for the actual communities that I've been in, they do read, they'll read, they'll read a letter in.
Okay.
Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
Okay. I'm sitting here listening. So we wanted to not allow a person who writes a letter, not to be able to write a letter, correct?
They can write letters, and you're, any one of you can read it in.
Okay.
Or a neighbor, or, it's, there has to be a personal representation.
You want someone present. And, just a minute, so, okay, so you're saying the alderman would be the person at present to read the letter that the person wrote?
It could be.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, it could be him.
It would not prohibit you, no.
Could you say that again?
It wouldn't prohibit you from...
Right, right, I'm just saying that, as we, as I heard, is that if a person doesn't have anybody, then the alderman for that ward would be, could be the person to read the letter. Am I right or wrong?
Alderman can read, yes.
Okay, but it'd be, now this might sound, start way out there, but our city clerk used to read the letters when they came in, correct? Okay, now, so if we, I do understand what you're saying, it does make sense, but it's not a violation of the freedom of speech, or anything like that, I mean, I know it's out there, but no violation, but as long as the alderman's here, or he got somebody to read it for him, the letter could be acceptable, as long as it's not derogatory.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brasshaw.
Thank you. I think one of the problems we have here is, when we've written into the record of the address by non-members, it basically says, no questions shall be asked of the alderperson except through the chair, any person making personal, impertinent, abusive, profane, or slanderous remarks, who, or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council and so forth, that's in person, but it seems like some of the people that have written the letters like to do all that, and when that letter's written into record, who's going to filter that? I think that's why we've come up with this, I mean, that's the whole reason of doing that, is to get rid of some of that slanderous and abusive language from some of the people when they read these letters, and because they don't want to man up and approach the council themselves, and behave themselves.
Right, because right now, our practice was, we'll just read it, but then that's, it's, how do you draw that line then? You can't stop that, so.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
How many letters have we have that fit into this category? Doesn't seem like we have a problem, does it? We're creating one. One person wrote a letter that somebody didn't like, now end the conversation, we can't let anybody write one. And who is a more independent person than the city clerk to read it? She's going to read what's on the paper, you know? Sally, Alderman Brasshaw, you're basically saying that if you get a letter and it's got some slanderous stuff in there, you're supposed to weed it out, what should you really weed out, and what shouldn't you weed out? I mean, we're on a slippery, slidy slope here. It's obviously one thing, you know, everybody trusts everybody, you know, or we wouldn't be here. I, I think this is all created over one letter, end the conversation, and if you want to take the slanderous stuff out, and the city clerk do that, that's fine. That's my humble opinion.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brasshaw.
It's in my humble opinion that it's not the end of the conversation, just because you say it is, that's why we're having this discussion.
Say that again.
It's in my humble opinion that it's not the end of the conversation, just because you say it is, that's why we're having this conversation.
I agree.
And I never said that you couldn't read it, or you shouldn't, I'm just saying that this is why I believe we got to this point, that's why I read that out loud.
You said that the alderman could alter the part that was slandered, or say something different than the part that was slandered. That's what, we're getting here, where somebody's writing in a letter, and somebody's going to read it and change it. What happened to the First Amendment rights? Freedom of speech, I can say what I want to, I can send it in, as long as I don't slander you on it, if you can slander, take the words out of it. It's off of one letter, guys, that's it, end the conversation, end of my conversation.
Mayor.
Alderman Smith.
I don't know if one letter prompted this, this change, but if something is written or said that is slanderous, then somebody should be accountable for that, I don't think we should be reading slanderous comments into the record of this council or any of the public body, and I don't think we're trying to inhibit people's first right, or their First Amendment speech rights. People can come here and take the podium and say whatever they want, all this asks is that they take some ownership of those comments, so I don't see this as a big sea change to the ordinance. Under the current and past practice, we just have to verbatim read the letter, if we're guided by past practice, and if it contains slanderous, or profane, or even spurious comments, then it goes into the record, and you can say that there's nobody more objective than W, but W has, has some credibility in what she says, and, you know, when, if she's just regurgitating the words, I think that there are people that may, may put some greater credibility into that. So I don't see this as a, as a huge change in the ordinance, and I think I would support it if it came up for a vote.
Any further discussion?
Well...
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Ultimately, whichever version you have here, it's going to come down to a matter of interpretation and enforcement of what you got on the books. We already had on the books saying he needed to speak, yeah, it shall rise, and approach the, shall rise and state his or her name and address for the record. We didn't follow it. We've got in here that it wasn't supposed to be any personal, impertinent, abusive remarks, we didn't follow it. So, I mean, if you want profane and slanderous in there, they may or may not be redundant. At the end of the day, I think it comes down to really, are we just enforcing what we've got on the books? And I think you can largely handle a lot of the, a lot of the issue through saying we're actually going to enforce what we have on here. If, if there are individuals that have significant concerns that this is somehow suppressing voices or views, you know, on that, those are legitimate concerns as well, I don't, I don't, I don't think at the end of the day, we are suppressing that, but if that's the case, would there be any merit in continuing to actually maybe enforce what we have on the books, realizing that that would allow written comments in, but, but actually filter pursuant to what is in our code? Would there be, would there be any appetite for that, and seeing where that goes, and then if it's still being abused, bring back up the ordinance and make the change? I'm just saying, would there be any appetite amongst the council for that, or do we want an all or nothing, one way or the other?
I mean, because we've allowed it, we'd lose it.
I understand, I understand you'd have to read things, what I'm saying is you can filter it through the actual language that is already in the code, I mean, I would argue there have been multiple read comments that would not be, that would not pass the filter that is already in the language of the statute. Are you saying that because we've allowed personal, impertinent, abusive remarks in the past, that we have to allow them in the future, but for an ordinance change?
I think right now, because we don't have anything on the books right now, that's what's going to create the issue with any potential challenge to the PAC, is because we don't have anything, and then all of a sudden, if we try to enforce the fact that a slanderous mark was made, and we say, no, you can't do that, the PAC would say, you didn't have a rule on the books, you're not allowed to enforce that, even though, let's say, it was very clear that this was profanity, or something that is not appropriate, but because we don't have it on the books to say with regards to a written comment, one way or the other, that that's what's going to get us, we need to have something on the books. What it is, or what form it is, that's for the council to decide, but we need to put something on the books, or we should. something on the books, or we should.
May I follow up?
Yes.
What we do, we do have on the books right now, you're just looking to add a certain phrase, amongst other things, profane and slanderous. So if we add profane and slanderous, and by the way, subtract and address due to the Attorney General opinion, will that largely get us what we're trying to do, what we're trying to accomplish? Or...
I think we're still missing, then, the component of written comments, that's all. Again, you know...
And then, and then arguably, it's silent on, well, not silent, but if, there's nothing in here that if we, if we were to, if we were to vote this down, anyway, I realize it's because we haven't been enforcing our code, that's a problem, but you're in a conundrum either way. If you leave it the way it is, you've got a code that says one thing, but our actual practice doesn't have it, and then, on the other hand, you're saying, well, if we put in this new language, it's going to be too prohibitive. There's got to be a simple solution to meet both of those concerns.
In this way, it's enforceable when it's written, and so if we were challenged, we would lose if it's the way it sits right now, because we didn't enforce it.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Since, you know, obviously, there's a couple of different opinions on this, why don't we just take and not vote on it tonight, hold it over, and somebody type up a real copy of something that we can write?
Well, I'm not sure what you're asking for, because this is...
I'm asking for, everybody says, well, if we do this, and if we do this, and if we do this, let's write up a whole new thing of how we're going to do it, and then let's vote on that. Doesn't say, here, we're going to eliminate letters, or we can't have letters, or somebody can read the letter, or what we're going to do.
I don't know what you want to propose that would be different, though, that's what I'm asking.
I'll pass, I beat it to death enough, thank you. I'm just saying, rewrite.
Further discussion.
Read it. Jesus.
Madam Chair.
Alderman Keister.
I think what Alderman Clem is asking is, there's a lot of differing opinions here about letting in letters and letting out letters. One of the old, the old forms, maybe it allows it, maybe it doesn't, there's no, there's a little unclear, unclear area there, this one doesn't allow it at all. Can we look at this again, and come up with one that will allow written letters periodically, written by, and evaluated by the clerk, for the profanity and slander, and bring that back, rather than vote on this this evening? I think, I think that's kind of what I would like to see now, is something kind of a cross between this one and what we had, that would allow them to do it, but also cover us as far as having it writing what we allow, what we won't allow.
Mayor?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
I think what they want, basically, is an amendment indicating that written comments will be allowed, as long as they meet the other requirements of the statutes, I think what you're really asking for at the end of the day. Whether they'll make the motion or not, I don't know, but that's, that's what I'm hearing.
Alderman Chesney.
I think it's just a matter of policy, I think there's really two ways we're going to go, is either one, we're going to allow written comments to be read into the record, or we're not. The vote before us would be that we don't allow written comments into the record, however, somebody could have representation, the things that we've already gone over, the only other option is going to be that we do allow, I don't think that there's really, it's either you allow it or you don't. I don't understand what the middle piece is.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
This'd be probably a question for council, if, if we do allow letters into the clerk's office and have someone in that office screen them, does that open us up for even more liability through the AG's office? If someone would sign a complaint, oh, you didn't read my letter, you know, and they felt that there was no derogatory marks or in there?
I do see some potential issues with that, as to who's screening it, and for, for what, and what's the standard, to say what's slanderous, what's not slanderous, what's a personal attack, what's not a personal attacked, I mean, there's always, there's always a potential for a shade of gray, you know, I mean, certain things might be very clearly, that's a profane word, there's no question about that, but there's always the potential for something that's a little bit, you know, closer to the line, you know, so I see some potential issue there, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Alderman Smith.
I agree with Attorney Zito, I think it's a slippery slope when we assign any person, really, to start editing letters, or determining what constitutes a slanderous remark, but, and really, I don't think that we should be trying to truncate people's speech, we're only asking them to take ownership of it, take the podium and say it. I mean, they can say whatever they want, slanderous, spurious, whatever, but I don't think it's unreasonable to ask someone to stand up and say it.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
We're making the assumption that that person can come here and speak.
Well, they are their...
Little old lady from Pasadena that's home, and there's two foot of snow on the ground, she can't get here, I'm just using that as an example, there's, there's health issues, there's, there's organizational issues, some, some organization may write you a thing, could be in support or non-support of something. I can't accept the latter.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Alderman Smith.
Well, there's no perfect solution, and I'm not suggesting that, you know, that we should try to, to hinder people's ability to address the council, there are other avenues, and people can use proxies, and then family members are called their aldermen, and certainly, you know, any alderman worth being elected or reelected would accommodate a person like that.
Mayor?
Alderman Keister.
There have been several occasions, since I've been on this council, where people have gotten up to the podium, and either made direct attacks, slanderous comments, or other derogatory things, that have been called, called on by the mayor, and stopped and shut down there. So it's been done on a number of occasions. All we're asking for is to do the same thing for the letters. And if we can do it here when people are talking, we can do it with the letters. That's what, that's kind of what I don't understand. You know, it's, it's, as a matter of fact, I think it was just a couple of months ago that that was, one of those incidents happened, that people, people were shut down because of the language and the mannerism in which they were doing it.
So are you suggesting that if, as the clerk reads something, we would stop her?
No, I would say that if we can sit here, and, again, and I'm not trying to make any accusations or anything here, but you, as the mayor, as by this ordinance, and I believe by the other one, are responsible for that, you make the decision. I believe Dovey can also do the same thing, or, excuse me, the city clerk, it's basically practice that we're already doing, we're just using a different person.
Madam Mayor.
Actually, I think Attorney Zito had something to add.
Well, it'd be something that...
My initial thoughts on that are, the mayor is in the chair, you are the one who's protecting the office, but something's broken, you spoke in there, and you would make a determination as to whether something that was out there, if you have that kind of libability...
To be able to, that libability to be able to...
Madam Mayor.
I guess I'm just kind of thinking out loud right now, as, you know, what are potential issues, if, if the letter, if you're saying the letters, when it's being read out loud, that the mayor would still have that authority to, on the spot, then, all of a sudden, if it's starting to get profane, or whatever it is, or if it's ahead of time to start striking what the mayor feels would be inappropriate, you know, or slanderous remarks there, I guess I, we'd have to think that one through a little bit more.
If I may, Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
What I was referring to is, we've done it on the council floor with one person, i.e. the mayor. Either the mayor can, if need be, edit the letters, or the city clerk can edit the letters, under direction put in, put in ordinance form or something, if need be, to determine this before the meeting. To me, and, and maybe I'm wrong, but to me, it's, it's basically the same thing. You're either editing live, or you're editing on paper. I guess, I guess I don't understand what the difference would be, either way.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
I think my dear friend next to me, Alderman McLanathan, has offered something that may be something to get us through hurdle number one here, and then figure out hurdle number two, and that's basically amendment...
Well, if, yeah, Mayor, I mean, if, if the issue is whether we're going to want, you know, written or not, I'll, I'll just offer just a motion on an amendment, and see where the votes go on that. That's, I'll move to amend it, to add the following. Written comments may be submitted as long as they comply with the requirements of this section.
Second.
But also, that, that's the end of the amendment, however, actually, I would note, if we are going to allow it, you should also amend it to put, where it says profane or slanderous, move to amend it to put profane, comma, slanderous, comma, or libelous, because libel is written slander spoken. So if you're going to have a written amendment, you should have that on there. And then you can discuss, and see where the votes are on that, and I think that'll decide the issue, one way or the other, probably.
I'll second that, that motion.
Okay, so we have an amendment, as stated by Alderman McLanathan, seconded by Alderman Keister. Is there any further discussion on the amendment only?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Okay, so this is a complete policy shift from where we were in the original form, so now we're saying that as long as it's not slanderous, libelous, and profane, and all the other fun things that we don't want, then we're going to allow the comments to be read into the record from the clerk, so effectively, we're...
Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan.
It would be a change from the current written form, and it would be consistent with somewhat of the actual application. In the written form, yes, as it currently applies, that we shouldn't have been allowing letters to be read in the record from the beginning. In practice, we have been allowing letters to be read. In practice, we haven't been filtering comments, for the most part, written comments for any of the things that were already prohibited on there.
Okay. Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. To further up what you had said, Alderman McLanathan, where it says, "Any person making personal, impertinent, abusive, profane, or slanderous remarks in person," I think should also include the libelous, just so that they, they are written approximately the same.
I'm sorry, which point was that at?
Under Section 2, 2nd paragraph, towards the bottom. "Any person making personal, impertinent, abusive, profane, or slanderous remarks," and enter the libelous in there as well, just so that the verbiage is the same as the written comments, then, they can't say we're doing one for the other, and they'd be, both be treated the same, that's what I'm looking for. Does that sound about right?
I, I think the difference is, with the slander, that goes to verbal comments, libel is in written form, those are the two distinctions there, so if you're talking about written comments, you don't want libelous statements, if you're talking about verbal comments, you don't want slanderous statements there, so...
So follow up, you, you have to change the one word for the other in both of those? One...
I think it would be most appropriate for the section that talks about when someone is standing here live, making a statement, they not make slanderous comments, but then, in the section that talks about someone who submits something in writing, that they will not submit any libelous statements, because that pertains to written statements, as opposed to...
That makes sense, thanks.
Mayor?
Alderman Smith.
Do we have to have, do we have to have some dispositive vote on, on the amendment prior to suggesting some alternative?
So Alderman McLanathan, are you comfortable with your amendment?
Well, I would be curious in hearing as to why that amendment might not be the best in light of potential alternative recommendations, but...
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
I'm finally at the point where I agree with Alderman Clem, let's lay this over and get a couple of versions, because we're spending way too much time on this, and this is turning into a City Council 2015 meeting, so...
Well, then, we already have a motion on the floor, so we'll have to have that retracted, if that's the case.
Sure.
Motion to refer to the next City Council meeting.
Second.
All right, so now we have a motion made by Alderman Chesney, seconded by Alderman McLanathan, to move this to the next City Council meeting. Attorney Zito.
Council meeting, or committee meeting, I guess?
Council meeting.
Council.
No.
No, City Council meeting, I think we need to have four... It is a second.
Okay, so any further discussion on laying this over? Seeing none, all those in favor of laying this over to the next City Council meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. We'll move on to item number nine, which is the first reading of ordinance 201834. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
An ordinance to ascertain the prevailing rate of wages for laborers, workmen, and mechanics employed in public works of the city of Freeport.
Manager Crow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. By the 15th of July of every year, the city has to update its ordinances as it relates to prevailing wage. So this is, this is this year's version of that, to adopt the current prevailing wage within Stevenson County, as our basis in which to operate.
Discussion, Alderman Smith.
As this is concomitant with the law, and pretty routine, I move to, move it forward.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Busker, to move ordinance 201834 to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will move on to item number 10, which is the first reading of ordinance 201836. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
An ordinance of the city of Freeport, amending Part 10 Streets, Utilities, and Public Service Code, Title II, Streets and Sidewalk Areas of the City Code of Ordinances, to provide for the regulation and application of small wireless facilities.
Thank you. Manager Crow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The state legislature passed, and it was signed into record, small wireless facilities requirements, and basically, it allows utilities to come in and place small wireless facilities on current existing poles or locations, and within the right of ways, also, it, home rural municipalities are authorized under existing state law to enact appropriate regulations as it relates to small wireless facilities. Small wireless facilities are also allowed to be placed in people, basically, within your yard, and what this does is this regulates, this is the IML recommended regulations in dealing with how we're going to deal with wireless, small wireless facilities, only regulate allowing one per pole, height and zoning for variance as it is for small wireless facilities, as well as our regulations, is that they are allowed to put them within the right of way, that the other utilities do, but they have to come in for variance, if they are not going to put them within the right of way.
Mayor?
Alderman Keister.
Manager Crow, I just have one quick question for you. You mentioned that home rural communities are allowed to do this, and with the big discussions we've had lately, in the next few years, if we lose home rule, where does that leave us on this?
We have to go back to, we lose all the ability to regulate these things, if we lose home rule.
Okay, thank you. Mayor?
Alderman Keister.
Make a motion to move it forward.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Chesney, to move ordinance 201836 to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will move on to item number 11, which is the adoption of Resolution 201834. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
Resolution authorizing application for a public transportation capital assistance grant with the Illinois Department of Transportation and the city of Freeport.
Thank you. Director McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our annual consolidated vehicle procurement grant application that we submit to the Illinois Department of Transportation. This particular application is for $310,000 to provide six vehicles to our Pretzel City Area Transit Fleet. Just to give you an idea of past applications, we've requested along the same lines and received two replacement vehicles each year, so we're anticipating two to three new vehicles in our fleet.
Good, thank you very much. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
Motion to adopt Resolution R. 201834.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman McLanathan, for the adoption of Resolution 201834. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the rule?
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brashaw?
Aye.
Keister?
Aye.
Chesney?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
That is adapted eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 12 is the adoption of Resolution 201835. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
Resolution of the city of Freeport, authorizing an... Resolution of the city of Freeport authorizing and approving an agreement with Greater Freeport Partnership.
Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the resolution approving the adoption of the contract that was in agreement, that was discussed at the last COW. This requires the partnership to create an economic development strategy plan, basically do retail recruitment, grow our businesses within the community, bring marketing and tourism, secure a main, move towards securing a Main Street certification, develop a five-year budget, three to five-year budget, do fundraising, and continue to marketing events, all under one hat. And also, they'll be managing the loan and microloan program, as well as to help stimulate redevelopment and downtown TIF. They'll also be the single point of contact for developing RDA redevelopment agreements for businesses that want to come into the community. And so then, those will then be brought to City Council for approval. They will maintain a contact with DECO, travel to the different, both recon and ICSC as required, as well as other economic development and marketing, tourism and marketing conferences to promote Freeport. This, the partnership will receiving money from both hotel motel taxes and TIF. And over last year's, it's a reduction of about $14,000. We are seeing contributions from the business community make up the majority of the money within the Greater Freeport Partnership. And the county is going to be entering into the same type of agreement as we move forward.
Discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Nineteen pages of fun reading here, this contract. I do appreciate all the work you've put into this, and I'm sure the attorneys have had fun going over it, making sure everything's legal. And everybody, I'm assuming, in the Greater Freeport Partnership is in agreement with this contract before we vote on it.
It was briefed to the Greater Freeport Partnership last Wednesday, and they are in agreement to it, with it.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
We discussed this a fair amount last week, so I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-35.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman McLanathan, seconded by Alderman Keister, for the adoption of Resolution 2018-35. Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Thank you. Attorney Zito, is there... There is language in this contract, I'm trying to find it, that does allow the city to back out of this particular arrangement if there's financial difficulties. How about if we just want, how about if the administration, the council decided down the road they wanted to move in a different direction? Is there still the ability and flexibility within the contract to do so? If it's not a financial hardship, but just a change in direction? So for example, if there's this general opinion that this isn't working, while they're not necessarily in violation of the contract, is a future city council have the ability to change directions if needed?
There is a non-appropriations clause. It doesn't get into the details as to why you choose not to appropriate it. Just as if you choose not to appropriate, you don't appropriate there. And I think that effectively, basically, you know, if you're not going to fund it...
Do we need to offer any clarity that it is with or without cause, we can not appropriate the funds?
Something to the council, then we can add that language in, if that's a concern.
Well, it's a given though, right? Without it?
Currently, as written right now, it says that, you know, we have the discretion to appropriate funds. And to the extent that we don't appropriate funds, that's within our discretion not to appropriate funds.
So is there any benefit in your legal opinion to put that in, to offer clarity of that? Or are you comfortable with the present language?
I think that if it's the concern of the council to say, hey, we want to be able to say, for any reason we want, out at any time, then I think we can add that clarification, if that is the concern, then, yes.
Mayor, if I may.
Alderman Chesney.
And my only concern as an Alderman is I will not be on the City Council in the entire years of this contract. And the last thing I'd want to do is bind the city to future years if this isn't working or going down a different direction. I certainly would offer the next City Council and administration that flexibility if they want to move in a different direction. I just would hate to make a decision that is a five-year plan, that, you know, if there is a change of mind, a change of heart, a change of direction, it's just simply not working. We certainly want to have that ability, have the power of the purse. I just would open it up for a discussion point, because it's a sizable amount of money. It's a five-year contract. It's $450,000. We also know the pension pressures that we're getting. We also recognize that our revenues are flat and the expenses are going up. And this is a pretty sizable amount of money. So I just want the ability to make a decision for the next council if they decide they want to move in a different direction. They have to. If that's not the will of the council, then that's fine, too. I just open it up for a discussion point.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Counsel, I have a hard time finding it, too. I know there includes the language in regards to appropriation. Do you have where that is on here?
I do. It's page six. At the top. It says, "Payments shall be on a quarterly basis. Such funding shall be paid from appropriated tax increment financing TIF revenue from various city TIF districts, the city hotel motel tax tourism promotion fund, and the city's general fund. The city reserves the right to terminate or reduce the payment under this agreement for any reason beyond its control insufficient revenues are available from the city's appropriate funding mechanisms to pay the services provided by the partnership." So that's the section that deals with the fact that if you don't appropriate, you know, you don't have to, if you choose not to appropriate. Otherwise, there's paragraph 12, which is on page seven, which talks about termination, but that does speak to termination for cause.
So, follow up, Mayor. All right, so in your opinion, the language, subject to the annual appropriation of funds by the City Council, is broad enough at that point? And then also, you indicated paragraph 12 gives... Okay, further grounds for termination, one of them, which is failure of the City Council to appropriate funding. So in your opinion, is that adequately cover pretty much any scenario?
Obligation to appropriate funds for, if you're looking for the wholesale ability to say, I want to not just appropriate funds, I want to be able to completely back out of every single term and provision under that, then I think that would warrant some clarification, if that's what the council wants, is to be able to completely back out.
What would language look like? Like, is that a one-sentence language, or?
Yes.
What would that sound like?
The city can terminate this agreement for, you know, for any reason, in its sole discretion.
Mayor.
Alderman Smith.
How many public bodies have adopted this language, do we know, so far?
This is the same language the county has approved, is moving forward, that they've done at their finance committee going forward. The other public bodies that are there are the school district, realize that they only are contributing $2,500. The park district, Highland, as we're going, we're all sitting at the table. This is also language that has been approved by the business community in here. So we would have to, if we modify this, I would have to take it back to the board of the Greater Freeport Partnership.
So, Mayor. So suffice it to say, it would create a substantive delay in the adoption of this agreement, certainly by us. And it would have to be revisited by those who've already adopted it.
That's correct.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. I'm comfortable with the language that we've gotten here. But furthermore, is this language similar to the language that we used to have with all the prior other organizations, the times that we had written contracts with them?
This is almost the exact same language was in the NIDA contract.
I'm comfortable with it.
Alderman Keister.
Motion to approve R. 2018-35.
We already have that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Actually, you were the second.
Wow. Is the meeting over? Is it time to go home?
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor made by Alderman McLanathan, seconded by Alderman Keister, for the approval of Resolution 2018-35. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
That resolution is adapted eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 13 is bid opening June 12, 2018, for the demolition of 416, 422 East Iroquois. Director McDonald.
Thank you. This parcel is the multi-unit parcel across from our fire department on Adams Street. We had one responsive bidder, that was JMP Trucking LLC, for $47,700. And we would respectfully request the council's approval for that bid.
Thank you. Discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Nancy, could you please go through the process that you just, that you do? Like you mentioned, only one bidder came through. But just so the audience knows, how much you go through to try and get multiple bidders?
What our general process is, is that we, you know, prepare the RFP. It's published on our website. We email to our past contractors. And we also have a copy here at City Hall that folks can look at or pick up a copy.
Published in the newspaper.
I'm sorry, it's also published in the newspaper.
Could I do a follow-up? Is it in your mind that we only got one due to the size of the building, or the kind of the location of it there?
That's my suspicion, plus it's attached to some others. It's like one long structure on that block, and so there might have been some concerns with that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Thank you. Director McDonald, do we contact the contractors to make them aware that something's coming up? Perhaps it got slipped in email or junk mailbox or something like that? Because I always share the concern that Tom does, that having one bid just doesn't sound right.
Right, right. We generally email those out.
And everybody that would be emailed would be contractors that have done demolitions in the past?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
If this is approved, how much is that going to leave in the budget for further demolitions?
About $150,000.
Follow-up, Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve is requested.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Chesney, for the approval of the bids, the bid for JMP, as so stated. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on the approval?
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
That passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 14 is the approval of professional services agreement from Fairgram on the South Float Avenue Water and Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. Dennis.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As the council is aware, we were originally going to try to do a full-depth reconstruct from South Street up to Galena. But due to the timeframe and the IDOT paperwork that is needed, we have shifted to just doing a utility contract and then coming back and overlaying it come next year with a larger contract. And due to the time constraints of where we're sitting at now in the year, and trying to get construction going this year, we'd like to enter into a professional services agreement with Fairgram, so they can take care of the paperwork and the permitting for both the water main and the sanitary sewer for that stretcher project.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Dennis, is this just for the engineering aspect of this project?
Yes, it's just for the construction documents, not the actual construction inspection.
Follow-up.
It's also, it's also for permitting. Because we're putting in new water and sewer line in there, we are required to go out and get an IEPA permit to do this, because it's not emergency construction. If it were doing under emergent work, we would not have to get an IEPA permit, because this is scheduled work. We have to go through and get IEPA permitting on it.
Yes.
Thank you. Is that IEPA permit, is that extremely expensive?
It's, it can be. It can be more time-consuming. They have to go through and check the engineering plans and the specifications before they will allow us to do the work.
Okay, and one more follow-up, Mayor? Thank you. And what is the proposed cost for this whole project? Mr. Carr.
For the engineering, it's the $78,000. We have estimated out that both water and sanitary sewer construction be, I think it was like $1.5 million.
Including the, this initial amount, correct?
This is not included in that.
Oh, okay. Motion for approval?
Second.
Alderman Chesney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Carr, it appears, and I haven't done an empirical study, but it appears that we're spending more money on engineering costs. Now, it could just simply be because we're doing more work, which is a good thing. Previous practice was, a lot of this was done in-house. It seems like maybe that practice is, we've moved a little bit away from that practice. So, one, could you speak to that comment? And then the second is, is that what are we doing, and it's largely for the listening audience or the viewing audiences, what are we doing to ensure that we're competitive on the engineering services as well? I mean, are you bidding these out occasionally to make sure that you're in line with where we need to be to hold, you know, our prices? Where they, you know, how are we ensuring we're getting a good deal? Because we do that with everything else. So, two-part question.
Yes, so the previous engineering, from what I've seen, for both the water main and the sanitary sewer, has been contracted out. Most of the engineering that I've seen past, city engineers do, has been the MFT contracts of the general mill and overlay projects. I think the Big Four and the Phase B and all those contracts were all put out to bid and contractors that way as well. So I don't think we are adding any engineering fees. I think it might have been going through the Water and Sewer Commission originally, so it might have been hidden a little bit out of council's mind or out of sight. But as for, as for how we're making sure that we're getting a competitive price, I guess I didn't go out to a second engineering firm regarding estimates and estimates of time as that way. But the percentage that they have is a very general percentage of the cost versus the engineering. And so I thought it fell in line with what is common practice.
And one thing, I'll comment on this, is so in the state of Illinois, within the last year, there has been a purchasing of the two engineering firms out of Rockford in Misman and McClure by IAM...
IMAG.
IMAG. And they have moved out of this area and are based out of Moline now. So the only two firms that are in operating within this area, McClure has a smaller office in Rockford, or Willett Hoffman and Fairgram. We can bring in an engineering firm from, and Wil Hoffman's doing some of our street work right now, or the bridge work, excuse me, the bridge work. We can go out to, to the offices for, in Moline for the IMAG. But they have basically shut down the McClure and Misman offices in Rockford.
One other thing that I may add on engineering contracts is it's, I think it might even be illegal. I don't think you can select an engineering firm based on a cost, because it has to do with public safety. So engineering has to be quality-based.
Andrew Crowe, or Madam Mayor. Alderman Chesney.
That is true. You can't solicit based off cost. What you have to do is you have to put a diet, you know, you have to put a spreadsheet together, and you have to give weight of cost, quality of work. So there is a way that you can make cost an indicator, it just can't be a driver. It just is a lot more work. And in this case, it would be a lot more work on the city's end. I just want to ensure that we're not simply looking at a project and say, oh, it's between eight and 12 percent, looks good, that we're actually holding everybody accountable, because we do, you know, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on engineering work. And I just want to make sure you're watching the dollars, not that you're not, but just bringing it to your attention. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Smith.
Director Carr, I see the final engineering on the street resurfacing has been excluded from this contract. Does that mean we intend to do that engineering in-house?
Yes, the mill and overlay will be a part of the MFT project for next year.
Okay, thank you.
And Director Carr will be doing, Director Carr will be doing all the mill and overlay and reconstruct the roads.
Follow-up, Mayor.
Alderman Smith.
I was thinking a little that you had alluded to some problem with South Float Avenue that required some new streetscaping and engineering. And I mean, is that included in?
The only, that is not included in that. That is a separate, he's going, working to do the work. They've done the complete shooting. What we're going to do is we're going to lay the pipe, the water and sewer in here. We're going to do the, we can do the back...
that required some new, the streetscaping and engineering, and, I mean, is that included in?
The only, that is not included in that, that is a separate, he's going, working to do the work, they've done the complete shooting. What we're going to do is we're going to lay the pipe, the water and sewer in here, we're going to do the, we can do the backfill out of MFT, and then we're going to do the mill and overlay next year.
They will be putting a new sidewalk on the west side of the roadway though, for the water main.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
One quick question while we're on the subject. With it being not a complete construction project and just doing the mill and overlay, are you still going to be able to fix that dip at Jefferson and Float, or is that going to stay there?
It is still in my intent to fix that problem.
Thank you.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Keister for the approval of the professional services. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
McClanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
And Clem.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 15 is the approval of professional services agreement from Fairgram for the electrical engineering programming and control professional services at the Hancock Wastewater Treatment Plant. Director Kopansky.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see, what we have before you is a professional, proposed professional services agreement, came to the board a couple of months ago for a motor and pump for our Levy Station, and that was for those materials. Now, this is for the materials, or the design for the additional electrical and the control of the pumps and motor. And Fairgram is, who have reached out, for roughly $22,000, but roughly $37, just under $4,000 is for contingency. So, if we do not have to spend that money, we will just save on that component. The equipment that we're going to upgrade and install as new will be something that will be an additional set of eyes on the operator doing the work, so we don't look to have any issues with the treatment plant when we're having rain events and such.
Questions?
Oh, there's one thing I, important thing. Commonwealth Edison has an energy efficiency rebate program, and with the four VFDs for the pumps over there, plus another pump over at our Carroll Street well, we're able to go and get money back, and after I wrote this memo, I received communication from ComEd to where we will, with everything looking good, we received approximately $23,400 back.
Wow, nice job. Questions?
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Chesney for the approval of the professional services as stated. Any further questions? Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
McClanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
And Clem.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is the reports of department heads. Finance.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our auditors were here today, and they'll be here all week. Looks like things are going pretty well with them. We had one person come out last week and look at our debt service schedules and a few other items, so our audits are actually ahead of schedule from last year. Secondly, we had our new junior accountant start last week, Thomas Preu, and he seems to be catching on quickly as well. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to encourage the citizenry to register for an iWorks account. You can do that through our website, City of Freeport, and the cool thing about it is you can report potholes or nuisances from your mobile device or your lap, you know, your PC or laptop, and we certainly could use your help. Other than that, just a reminder, if you're looking at my face, it's bright red, so just be sure to use sunscreen when you're out in the sun this summer. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that advice. Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Little update from the street crews, we're going to be doing some white painting, so if the white paint looks new, please don't drive on it. If you see cones on the paint, don't drive on it. We're doing tree removals pretty heavy. A lot of what we're doing right now is ash trees. I do ask that if there are no parking signs around a tree, please do not park in that area. They are there for a reason. We're going to be beginning some work on West Street, just north of South. I think there's been four cones out in the middle of the road. We've gotten our permit from IDOT, and we're going to be patching those several heaves there in the roadway. Other than that, we're going to begin surveying on the Navho Basin, and then when that's complete, we're going to start surveying float north of Galena.
Thank you. Fire.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My question, Dennis, was since that is a state highway and stuff, do, I know we get certain funds for doing things, do we get reimbursed by the state for doing that?
This sits under our maintenance MOU we have with IDOT already, so we will not get reimbursed for this.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Alderman McClanahan.
Thank you. About the tree program, if you have to remove a tree, if the city's removing a tree and it's in between the sidewalk and the street, who's responsible for the stump removal?
The city will be coming back and doing stump removal.
Okay.
We're just setting a little higher priority on some of the trees that need to come down.
Okay, thanks. I had a couple ask if they needed to do something on it, so, appreciate it.
Alderman Chesney.
Thank you, Mayor. Director, how are we doing on tree removal as far as backlog? It's a loaded question, but I know there's going to be priority one, two, and three, but assuming all priorities are met, are we six months out, a year out, two years out, five years out?
So, forestry went around the last few rain days, and they've taken care of everything west of, south, or west of west and north of Galena, and just ash trees that are dying or dead, they're sitting over 250 trees, and that's just ash trees, that's not maples or oaks. They are getting about one a day, and that's if we don't have to pull sidewalk for the sidewalk program. So, we are going to be at it for a long time.
One a day.
Yeah. So, how big's the backlog?
Hundreds, if you're talking years. I would imagine that a few of our guys might retire before they're all down, if we're going to do them all in-house.
Do we have a proposal in the budget to address contracted trees, to speed this process up?
So, originally, we had a proposal for $150,000 in the budget, that was removed when we were going to balance the budget. We currently got $10,000 in the budget as we were going forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just an update, we had two of our firefighters complete arson investigator training, that was Matt, Kyle, and Brad Cox. That brings our total up to three arson investigators that are currently on different shifts. Hillary Brochus has been an arson investigator in the past, so that kind of helps shore up some of our investigations that are done, especially when they go, if there's any convictions for arson and those types of things. Also, our foreign fire tax board, in regards to fire station selling and some of the training facility, they, they're on board, they want to help with a line item, they've set aside $5,000 out of the budget right now as an ongoing expense, maybe yearly, that we try to put away towards something down the road. So, they're thinking ahead, they're on board with trying to find something too and helping out where we can, and where we don't have money in other areas of our budget, so, that's it.
Thank you. Police.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind everyone watching and everyone here about the Dairy Days Parade. This weekend, the weather should be much better than it is today, and currently, right now, the parade kicks off at 1:30, and should be a good time for everybody. That's all I have.
Thank you. Water and sewer.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me continue with Commonwealth Edison. I was at a meeting at their facility in Rockford today to where they were going over energy efficiency rebate programs and such, and one of the takeaways I got from that is there's a program, or a portion of a program, available for police and fire facilities. I've shared that with the police and fire chief, and one item, one big takeaway from that, you know, moving forward with the water treatment plants is to involve them at the beginning, because there's great incentives that are going to be available. Once we start that process, and starting it at the front with them, should reap, you know, good incentives for us.
IT, did you have anything you want to add? Thank you. Then that leaves us with the manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple things, so, the Grand Victoria closed on, was sold on, closed on Friday. The new owner and developer has pulled his first building permit as of this morning. So, we're hoping, he's, he is talking to a couple of different flags about getting the hotel up and operating. We are in discussions, and as I put into the weekly, we are, for issuing of the occupancy permit, we'll want all the rooms done before we issue the occupancy permit for that. Some, there's, Picnic in White is also occurring this weekend. It's an event being sponsored by the art museum down, it'll be interesting to see where they, they're going to announce it only an hour prior to where it's occurring, so hopefully the weather holds on Saturday for that. We are working on to get our crews out, we've had some turnover on our televising crews, we've got those back, rehired, so we're hoping to get out and get the televising of the sewers beginning to work up and get the INI a problem. What we've noticed is we're, Tom and I have been watching it very closely, every time we get about two inches of rain, we're having to go into some form of bypass. So, it indicates that we, it was probably in bypass, sometimes bypass, and it indicates we have a big INI problem, so, but that's all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to draw attention to just a couple of things. June is Dairy Month, and last weekend was the egg breakfast, which I know many of you attended, and wanted to say thank you for serving, whether it was, you know, making the eggs or serving the coffee, so, but my point is, it takes hundreds of people to pull things like that off, so, thank you to all of those that volunteered. And any way that you can look to supporting the community in the agriculture in our, in our area, like Chief said, this Sunday is the Dairy Days Parade, it's at 1:30 in the downtown, and also next Wednesday, the 27th through Sunday, the 1st, is the Stevenson County Fair. So, it's coming up early this year, so if you can support that, I know the fair board would appreciate that as well. So, Alderman McClanahan.
No further comment, thank you.
Alderman Ross.
Yes, we have Neighborhood Watch, it's going to be the 21st of this month, yes, back at the VFW at 6:00 PM. Hopefully you can attend, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Smith.
Yes, I'd just like to say that both as a former city employee and a former trustee of the police pension fund, that had many opportunities to interact and learn a lot from Linda Bus during her time as a, as the city treasurer, and that, in my opinion, there never was a more dedicated public servant in City Hall than Linda, and that she did a lot of good work during her time here, and I'm most appreciative of the support and the effort that she put forth during her tenure for pensions for the city. And I have one rhetorical question for the fire chief. Inasmuch as we collect ambulance fees, do you know, do we pay property taxes on the fire stations? And we can move on.
Okay, then. In the case anyone was wondering where all those sounds were going off, it was a flash flood warning, so. Alderman Busker.
Nothing this evening here.
And Alderman Brashaw.
A lot of you realize that we will have July fireworks in Freeport, it'll be Saturday, July 7th, I believe, if I have the date correctly, so hopefully everybody can go off for that, and we appreciate all the community's support. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Keister.
Yes, Mayor, two real quick things. Seventh Ward Neighborhood Watch meeting Wednesday night, main fire station at 6 o'clock, and a lot of you know I'm a motorcycle enthusiast, enthusiast belonged to an organization called ABATE, which we had a meeting yesterday, and one of the news that we were given is kind of disheartening, because the, for this month, I think there has been 15 motorcycle fatalities in the state of Illinois to date, and so I'm asking, practically begging people, please watch out for motorcycles. We are smaller, we are harder to see, and for those that you don't know, one of the most common causes of accidents between motorcycles and cars is a car turning, making a left-hand turn in front of a motorcycle coming in the opposite direction, because they don't see them or they misjudge the direction. So, if you're in that situation, and there's any doubt of the distance, just wait, it's better than spending two hours trying to have that motorcycle pulled out of your passenger seat.
Alderman Chesney.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Clem.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next is public comments. Are there any public comments? Yes, you'll have to just take the microphone. You have to go to the microphone so the audience can hear you. Thank you, Scott.
I am Scott Helms, I'm on the Stevenson County Board, I live in Cedarville, Illinois. Good question about why the airport pays property taxes. It's actually a question I asked, not in this room, but in the other City Hall 13 years ago, when I went through the budget process for the first time, and that's where I saw it, not after the check was written. The City of Freeport has an FBO which operates the airport, so you lease it, and you lease the buildings, and you drive income off of that, but the lease is the key to this. Nursing home doesn't pay real estate taxes because it owns and operates, 100 percent. So, that's exactly what it was. And Alderman Clem, I think you talked about some of the properties Stevenson County has. It does own some property, I believe that, I think you mentioned yards weren't being mowed, but delinquent taxes, those are simply held by the county until they are sold off and put back on the tax rolls, so they aren't going to pay real estate taxes on something that they don't physically own, they're just the agent processing through that, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Any other public comments?